I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that the meeting has been duly called, and that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. The time is 6:00 PM. Item one, invocation and pledges. Trustee, Mr. Sanders, please.
All right, y'all would stand. I'd like to read something before we begin with prayer. This June the 6th of 2019 marked the 75th anniversary of D-Day. It was a milestone that represents the largest gathering, and they had a milestone gathering, the largest gathering of D-Day veterans around the globe this past June 6th. The youngest D-Day vets are now in their middle 90s. A few more years will be the, we will find the last of them gone. To mark this milestone and take advantage of the opportunities for discussion and commemoration, the National D-Day Memorial in Bedford, Virginia, observed the 75th anniversary with six days of ceremonies, displays, interviews, and much more. Because of that, on June 6th, 1944, Bedford, Virginia, lost 20 of 32 sons it sent to the invasion at Normandy. It was a devastating blow for the tiny community of just over 3,200 souls. Over time, grief gave rise to solemn pride and deep commitment to ensuring the story of D-Day and its cost and its consequences were not lost on future generations. That commitment, along with the distinction of sustaining the highest per capita D-Day losses, placed the monument to D-Day in Bedford, Virginia, rather than elsewhere in the country. It was dedicated in 2001, and with some 24,000 in attendance, the memorial has since hosted hundreds of thousands of visitors from around the globe. Now, I'd like to read to you the prayer, the opening prayer for the U.S. House of Representatives on June 6th, 2019, "To the U.S. House," by Pastor Zach Randalls, if you would bow with me, please. "Today, Lord, on the 75th anniversary of D-Day, we remember the sacrifices that were made for our freedom. Lord, we thank you that during times of uncertainty, your loving hands guide us and equip us that we might know what to do. In the midst of orchestrating the details of the universe, we thank you for valuing our individual lives. You are not too busy for us. Your word says, 'You are the God who sees me.' What a joy it is to know that. You not only know us, but you just, you know just what we should do to better ourselves and to better our world. Speak to us today and give us the courage to trust you. Shine your light in dark places that the truth might be visible and let hearts know, and help us to be mindful of you each and every day. I pray this in your holy and precious name. Amen."
Amen.
Join me in the pledge to the United States flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And have the pledge to your state flag.
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Item two, awards and recognition. Special recognition, state citizen, uh, state citizen B championship. Dr. No.
Okay, we'll ask Dr. Ted Landry, principal of the Woodlands High School, to come up and introduce our state champion.
Good evening. President Williams, members of the board, Dr. No. Thank you. Summer is definitely here, right? But as you well know, excellence in Conroe ISD doesn't take vacation. So, we definitely appreciate the time for allowing us to recognize two very deserving students. We're gonna start with, with the state citizen B champion, and I'm gonna introduce our coach for that event at the Woodlands High School. He'll introduce us to our state champion. I would like to introduce you, Mr. Preston Battle.
Good evening. When I took over the state citizen B team two years ago, I didn't know much more about it than many of the people in this room did. It was something that the social studies department had asked me to look into about making this team, and it was something that I thought would give my UIL permanent team some additional practice. But as we delved into this competition and learned what it was really about, we realized this was something that could give all social studies departments and all social studies students help. So, what the citizen B does is it tests a competitor or student's knowledge of U.S. history, something that everybody should know. It tests a student's knowledge of U.S. Supreme Court cases, something else that they should all know. But most importantly, it really just kind of touches on the soul of what we as citizens of the United States should know. So, that being said, the first year we dove into this competition, and Augustine, back here, went home with second place, which as far as I know is the highest that anybody at Conroe had ever placed. And we looked at each other that day and we said we were gonna come back again the next year, and we were going to win. So, this past year, school year, not knowing everything else that had been going on, we dove straight in. Augustine doing his 800 AP classes that he's always done, challenging so. And as we started UIL, as we started to make plans for current issues, he was right there along the way, not only doing his own bit, but also trying to make the team better, preparing them for future generation when he won't be there. And so, as we went to state again, they pulled me aside as we were getting ready to do the award presentation, and they let me know that Augustine had done something that they had never seen before, and their 30 years of doing this competition, he had achieved a perfect score on multiple choice. They had never seen that, and he'd almost come this close to getting an entire perfect score. And it was a great accomplishment for somebody that had accomplished so much already. UIL finished second in current issues, fifth in social studies. But the thing that all of this doesn't tell you is that this full-time, Augustine was using this information not only to excel academically, but he did so to become a citizen of the United States. So, he accomplished all of this, he's continued to accomplish more, and he has a lot of work that he wants to accomplish. With that being said, Augustine is strong.
Outstanding. Outstanding. Make sure I understand that correctly. This, this young man knows more about the U.S. I'll just make sure I heard that correctly. We gotta do better.
Thanks for bringing that up one more time.
It is what it is. All right, next one. Sorry about that. Next item, special recognition, 2019 UIL class, 6A boys, shot put, Dr. No.
All right, Dr. Landry, once again, another Highlander to be introduced.
Yes, indeed, like I said, we're full of excellence. So, it is, it is my great, great pleasure to introduce you to the Woodlands High School head, boys track and field coach, Coach yours Green, and our shot put coach, Coach Aaron Mador, to introduce us to the 2019 UIL class, 6A boys, shot put state champion.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say yes, but.
Yesterday.
Yeah, you've been here a few times.
There's a lot of really cool stats about our track and cross-country programs at the Woodlands High School, and one of those stats that I don't think gets published enough, it's been like 10 years of being a coach, a track coach at the Woodlands High School. Minimum of nine of those years, we've had a shot put or a distance thrower at Texas State Track and Field. So, in terms of events, I think it's appropriate that one of the best throws coaches in the United States speaks about his thrower this evening, that's Coach Aaron.
Good evening. It's been, it's a, it's an honor to be here to recognize the accomplishments of one of our athletes, Patrick. I think I've known Patrick since about five, four or five years. Grew up through SCL, my son. Just, just had an opportunity to see him grow. It's been interesting. Some things a little bit about Patrick, he, he's a member of both state championship track teams, something that both of the other teams say. He is, last year he was second in the shot put, and he's determined this year to move to state championship. We, I knew it was gonna be a great year. We went to New York City for indoor national championship, and Patrick last though, he moved first in the shot, 66-3. And a guy that was leading, but he beat half throw left, and he ended up beating him. So, he'll take a second in the nation. Coming back, went to Rice, and Patrick threw 66-6 there, which is his all-time best. It was, it was a pretty special, special season. Leading up to the state championship, really exciting. Just to get there as an athlete is phenomenal. It's, you're the top nine people in the, in the state, in your class, and it's not easy to get there, and he's been there a few times. And so, it's pretty, pretty special. Going to, at the state meet, Patrick, his first two throws, he fouled, and you're a little nervous because you have to give a legal throw to continue on finals, so he had to just give a half part of effort to make it finals, which was, made the finals, which is good, and we get to, into the finals, and Patrick, unfortunately, now he's going second out of nine people, which gives everybody the opportunity to best his throw. He ends up going to the league in 64, or something, something like that. But then we had to watch everybody else throw. The last throw, who was a very good thrower, PK Taylor, just missed, beat Patrick by a couple of inches. Phenomenal experience for him and me and our track team. He's done so much for our program, and his family as well. Thank you for recognizing him, Patrick.
Patrick, real quick, on behalf of the board, we want to offer our congratulations to you, and our thanks to you for how well you represent this school this year. Coach Green, I myself am a proud Highlander, and so I feel a sense of pride standing here every time our high school's up here. I think we're gonna have to get the Pepperidge family some reserve parking in California. You know, it's great that you had an older brother to watch and then set an example for you, but for you to come into an athlete in your own right, and not just be his little brother, but be your own state champion and your own man, we're very proud of everything that you've accomplished, and thank you on your effort.
All right.
Congratulations. Hey, congratulations, buddy. Congratulations. Coach, thanks for keeping me guys in line. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, let's keep on with that momentum. Item two C, special recognition, Dr. No.
Seeing that name on there, cut it. It is the Dr. Don Stockton Award.
It is right there. Just read.
As you know, we have a wonderful partnership with EFTA, and, and our science fair activities are a great example of that, but, but we do work with the EFTA year-round through programs in our classrooms, and also internships that go on throughout the school year. But tonight, we are here to recognize a very special teacher who put in a significant amount of work to make sure that all of our science fair activities were successful this year. And to introduce our Dr. Don Stockton Award of Excellence award winner is the president of the EFTA, Ms. Monica Baumkamp, EMEA. Monica?
President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. No, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening to, to speak on behalf of our entire SciTech committee. As you know, it's a huge partnership. It is something that takes many, many volunteers, many, many teachers, educators, and obviously the support of you all, you all here. We started last year, and out of Dr. Stockton, who was really a supporter of SciTech and was there from the very first year, we just celebrated our 29th year. So, next year will be a pretty, a pretty great landmark, and our 30th year. He clearly was a supporter of science education, and hands-on learning, being married to a science teacher probably helped with that. And so, we started doing an award for those teachers who do so much to make it happen. We have an exceptional teacher tonight that we, we are excited to honor. Her nominee said about her, every year, yeah, she's contributed much more time to work for students and help them complete the district, the state, and beyond. She also helps with science bowl and engineering design competition. She has placed, has had her students placed at every level, and has been a co-coordinator for the science home team that made it to nationals a couple of years ago. She's worked tirelessly with these, with these students for more than 20 years. She is, holds high expectations for students, will also join MOP, which, you know, sometimes with your degree in science fair, you need a little of that. She also invests time and efforts into building high performance in both SciTech and in the overall integrity of her program. And she really, absolutely, this award is about a teacher that goes above and beyond, and so I ask you to join me in recognizing how well for the Don Stockton Award. If I could ask Cheryl and Karen, are, are part of our SciTech team to come to this conference?
I am honored to, to recognize on behalf of the board, you're going beyond, above and beyond on behalf of the students and, and for, and for the science fair in general, and also thanks for all that they've done. It's a double pleasure for you to be here tonight and play for the state.
Hey, Karen and Cheryl, y'all, y'all join here, we love it. Thank you for your efforts, too. Appreciate it. Thank you so much for all you did.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Look at you, huh? Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, as we continue on, item two, D, special recognition ambassador awards, Dr. No.
All right. It's our privilege tonight to recognize a great group of hard-working folks that, that helped make our school day happen and keep our schools running and working to the very best of their abilities, and Mr. Kaker is here tonight to make those introductions.
Thank you, Dr. No. From the board, rest assured, Dr. No, it is a privilege to continue with our recognitions this evening and recognize our ambassador award winners from the custodial maintenance department. Tonight, we are acknowledging your outstanding service provided by custodians, maintenance and grounds employees, and the department's respective honorities. The department does an outstanding job maintaining all of our facilities inside and out, and a lot of that credit goes to their department director, Mr. Marshall Schroeder. I'm gonna ask to come forward at this time to recognize him as your ambassador of the department.
All right.
Good afternoon. President Wayne, members of the board, Dr. No, it's time to recognize the team members of the team that were selected as ambassadors of the year. Before I do that, I would like to recognize the members of our leadership team who are here today. As I argued in the beginning, Dwight Martin, assistant director of the maintenance department. John Brown, maintenance coordinator. Luis Barcenas, athletic supervisor. George McFloy, assistant coordinator for the shop. And our North Custodial coordinator, Ryden Shelton. And I'd really appreciate it, recognizing employees that really do the work for this school, for this, for this project. From North Maintenance Department, Mr. Penderario Alamos. He's been with the district since 2013. He's brought from that King Creek High School. He always does well, does a lot in the area, and the rest of the overall condition of King Creek High School ground. Performed a job even with minimal supervision. He's a team player, works well with all the staff in the maintenance facility, maintaining the facility at King Creek High School. From South Maintenance, Craig McMahon. Craig's been with the district since 2013. He's an HBA, HBA CTE official, who maintains appliances throughout the district, ice and cheese, Washington's dryer, and does a great job of keeping that company good. From South Custodial, Mr. Nixon Getrie. Nixon's been with the district since 2015. He's a custodian that works as a day opener at Cowell Elementary, has a big attitude, and is always willing to go there if you want. From North Custodial, Mr. Lorenzo Bernau. Lorenzo's worked for the district since 2009. He's an Ethan custodian at Washington Junior High. He's a dependable, hard worker, and will, always willing to do whatever they need to do. Next recipient is Brandon Stiles. Brandon's been with the district since 2013. He's an energy management system analyst and analyst. Brandon is always available to help and eager to assist wherever needed. He continues to grow and expand his knowledge, building out a new system with attention to detail, and efficient to the district, and helps keep our school in good running mode. Next recipient is Matt Peck. Matt's been with the district since 1992. She's an Ethan custodian at Kaufman Elementary. She does a lot in the area to help wherever she needs. She does the work with a smile, and has served the district very well throughout the year.
27 years.
Earlier, Dr. Landry talked about excellence, and I submit to you that our custodial and maintenance department is not only committed to excellence, but it's probably the most excellent department in the state of Texas, if not the United States. What you guys do is, is not only create an environment for our students and our teachers to thrive and teach, but you also continue to create that board environment. I can tell you how many stories and how many times I see, and I've heard myself, how the department is always reaching out to students and always being there, always being there for us as board members, where, because you, y'all are the cream of the crop, and on the hat of the board, and it's my honor just to recognize you tonight and tell you how, from the bottom of our hearts, how grateful and thankful we are for everything that you do, and all the efforts that you take to make this school district great of what it is. So, just continue to do that, and continue to lead, and again, thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Circle, circle around here. Here we go. You're, you're the leader.
Thank you, guys, please.
I'm gonna take your hand, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate everything.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Item two E, citizen's participation. Ms. Goff, has anyone registered, addressed the board?
No, they have not.
All right, outstanding. Item three, consent agenda. How consent agenda? Gentlemen, I have received no request to remove anything, so.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, gentlemen. Outstanding. Motion passes unanimously. Item four, administration, Dr. Stock, Dr. No, consider approval of.
I'm testing you today.
Man, it's on there, man, you gotta take, you can't put it on.
Can't you put his name on it?
Consider approval of campus mascot and school color for Stockton Junior High School.
All right, Mr. Coulson.
President Wayne, members of the board, and Dr. No, tonight we'd like to ask for your approval of mascot colors for Stockton Junior High School. Last month, we shared them with Harold Brown, the current principal of Washington Junior High, and the future principal of Stockton Junior High, to implement a mascot selection process. Because the tenant zones have not been established yet, Mr. Brown listed nominations from students and families at three campuses that could potentially contribute students to Stockton Junior High School. The campuses included were Bosman, Briar, and Travis. The submissions were compiled, and the top choices were then sent back to the students and families to identify their favorite mascot. Final was chosen were Stallions, Stingrays, and Sparkles. Sparkles was the favorite among voters by almost a two to one margin. Recommended school colors are maroon and bright. Picture is a determined-looking mascot recommended for Stockton Junior High. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of Stallions as the mascot, Maroon and Bright as the school color for Stockton Junior High School.
Mr. President, I move we approve as presented.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second that, even though I'm a longhorn in this, this maroon thing has bothered me a little bit. On behalf of Don and, and Hartwell, I'm gonna go ahead and second that.
All right, gentlemen, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Well, firstly, any discussion, or discussion, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Coulson, appreciate that. Next item on the gentleman, item four B, receive capital improvement updates, Dr. No.
All right, Mr. Foster.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. No.
Challenge.
It is my pleasure to bring you an update on our capital improvements we have.
and is always willing to go there every month. From North Cassobial, Mr. Lorenzo Bernau. Lorenzo's worked for the district since 2009. He's an East and Cassobian at Washington Junior High. He's a dependable hard worker and will, always willing to do what they're committed to. Next recipient is Brandon Stiles. Brandon's been with the district since 2013. He's an energy management system analyst and analyst. Brandon is always available to help and eager to assist wherever needed. He continues to grow and expand his knowledge with building up a consistent, with attention to detail, with an efficient to the district and help keep our school in good running order. Next recipient is Ms. Matt Peck. Matt's been with the district since 1992. She's an East and Cassobian at Kaufman Elementary. She does well in the yard to help wherever she needs. She does the work with a smile and has served the district very well throughout the year.
Twenty-seven years.
Earlier, Dr. Landry talked about excellence, and I submit to you that our Cassobial and Maintenance Department is not only committed to excellence, but it's probably the most excellent department in the state of Texas, if not the United States. What you guys do is not only create an environment for our students and our teachers to thrive and teach, but you also continue to create that board environment. I can tell you how many stories and how many times I see and observe myself how the department is always reaching out to students and always being there, always being there for us as board members when we visit. You, y'all are the cream of the crop and on the Hatchet Board, and it's my honor just to recognize you tonight and tell you how, from the bottom of our hearts, how grateful and thankful we are for everything that you do and all the efforts that you take to make this school district great and what it is. So just continue to do that and continue to lead. And again, thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Circle, circle around here. There we go. You're the leader.
All right. Thank you, guys, please.
Congratulations.
I'm going to shake your hand, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you, sir.
Appreciate everything.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so many years. That's awesome. Yeah, it's very great.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Frank, I apologize. Thanks so much. I was trying to memorize the names.
Thank you.
Wow, thank you so much. Look at you. Great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, your pearls.
All right. Item two E, citizen's participation. Ms. Goffrath, has anyone registered to address the board?
No, they have not.
All right, outstanding. Item three, consent agenda. How consent agenda? Gentlemen, I have received no request to remove anything, so...
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, gentlemen. Outstanding. Motion passes unanimously. Item four, administration. Dr. No, consider approval of...
I'm testing you today.
Man, it's on there, man. You gotta take, you can't put it on there.
Can't be putting his name on it, dude.
Consider approval of campus mascot and school color for Stockton Junior High School.
All right, Mr. Coulson.
President Wayne, members of the board and Dr. Noel, tonight we'd like to ask for your approval of mascot colors for Stockton Junior High School. Last month, we shared them with Harold Brown, the current principal of Washington Junior High, and the future principal of Stockton Junior High, to implement the mascot selection process. Because the tenant zones have not been established yet, Mr. Brown has listed nominations from students and families at three campuses that could potentially contribute students to Stockton Junior High School. The campuses included were Bosman, Brier, and Trappus. The submissions were compiled and the top choices were then sent back to the students and families to identify their favorite mascot. Final was chosen were Stallions, Stingrays, and Sparkles. Sparkles was the favorite among voters by almost a two to one margin. Recommended school colors are maroon and bright. Picture is a determined-looking mascot recommended for Stockton Junior High. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of Stallions as the mascot, Maroon and Bright as the school color for Stockton Junior High School.
Mr. President, I move we approve as presented.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second that, even though I'm a Longhorn in this, this maroon thing has bothered me a little bit. On behalf of Don and, and, and Hartwell, I'm gonna go ahead and second that.
All right, gentlemen, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Well, firstly, any discussion or discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Coulson. Appreciate that. Next item on the gentleman, item four B, receive capital improvement updates. Dr. No.
All right, Mr. Foster. Good evening, President Williams, members of the board and Dr. Noel. It is my pleasure to bring you an update on our capital improvements we have underway throughout the district. We'll start with Suchma Elementary. Suchma is scheduled to open in August when the kids come back for the next school year. So you can see from the overhead picture, the, the building and site are nearing their completion, so that at this point, we're installing fence, we're installing and getting ready to plant grass in the backyards, things of that nature. We've been working with the county on the west end of this campus to extend Firehouse Road to our new bus drive that's ready to tie in, and the county's making good progress and promises to have our road open where we can use it within next month or so, which should be well in time for us to train bus drivers and get everything in for the start of our school year next year.
Mr. Foster, can you go back just one? The two big areas, kind of these in, kind of the big far right and big far left, are those parking lots?
No, and that's, that's our backyard, so that's part of the fenced backyard, which is the playground area, so...
Oh, so those will be the playground, oh, all right, thank you.
Actually, we, we try to use a, generally speaking, not necessarily a regulation, but a soccer field-sized area, so we have areas for the kids to play in the backyard.
So that begs the question, where is parking?
Parking is immediately in front of the front door, so it would be parallel to the bottom of the, to Harper School Road for the, for the, where the parents would bring in and drop their kids off. And the teacher's parking lot would be on the right-hand side of the screen, right in front of where there's a kind of a U shape in the building. That's the mechanical yard, and so the faculty and staff and the bus, bus loop is on that side of the building.
All right, thank you.
As you can see here, the details around the front door, the site worker cleaning up nicely on the inside of the building. So last week, we got a chance to tour David and Sri Suchma through the inside of the building, and a few, I think Mr. Husmans and Dr. Noel were with us as well. And they'll recall, last week, this room of the building was stacked about eight feet high in ceiling tiles on the floor, so every day marks another significant move forward and progress on the buildings. You can see now that the building is, is becoming more and more finished from the fine arts wing through to the classroom rings. We're working with our purchasing department, will be out there with us later this week to do a logistics meeting because we're looking to receive furniture and fixtures for the building next week. So we've been clearing the commons areas, clearing the gym, things of that nature for that, for all those things to arrive, so they can be ready to set up as, as the classrooms become ready. So this week, we received the carpet for the building, so starting, matter of fact, today, the carpet installations began, so you can see the classrooms are becoming more and more finished from the fine arts wing through to the classroom rings. We're working with our purchasing department, will be out there with us later this week to do a logistics meeting because we're looking to receive furniture and fixtures for the building next week. So we've been clearing the commons areas, clearing the gym, things of that nature for that, for all those things to arrive, so they can be ready to set up as, as the classrooms become ready. So this week, we received the carpet for the building, so starting, matter of fact, today, the carpet installations began, so you can see the classrooms are becoming more and more finished as they, as they move through the building. Again, that's scheduled to open in August of this year, and we're going to be happy to start school when the kids come back in this, in the fall. At Austin Elementary, where we did a building addition, which allowed us to remove some of the older portions of that building from service. So the picture overhead now shows you that the demolition of the older, older building is, is, as of today, the old building is gone, so this picture's about a week old. So now they're working on demolishing the flatwork and the slab and things of that nature to get out of the way of that building, because the whole area, the, what is now the dirt area to the right of the building you're seeing in the picture is the playground, all the area for the kids to have that outdoor play area, as well as the stacking loop for the parent drop-off and pickup. So we're, the front door of the campus is now at the rear of the property, so we can get as many cars off of one of five as possible and create a much, much more safer and easier operated campus. So you can see from the front door, so we've got the namesake of the building installed, and as the details of that building are wrapping up on the outside, so on the inside, you'll see they're ready for carpet and other finishes installation, and we'll open that building when, when kids come back for, for, for the fall in August. At Stockton Junior High, that's campus is scheduled to open in August of 2020, and the, the primary goal or the critical path item we're working on currently is the masonry, so interior and exterior masonry. So you can see from this picture, the exterior of the building is coming, coming along, and more detail of what's going on on that building now, are building those, those scene view back walls that build up and make our, our very sturdy structure for the buildings. It's on the inside, the, all more of that masonry work is building, being built around the plumbing chases and the air conditioning and mechanical rooms, things of that nature. We're looking at areas of the building where the, the athletics and CTE and the fine arts programs are, so those are the taller spaces that take more time to construct, and that's where they've been focusing their time, and then they'll move to the academic portions of the building over the next several months. Moving on to Conroe High School, where we opened a building addition over the winter break, which allowed us to do what we're doing currently. So we've been renovating the second floor of the main building, so this is the status of that, that project right now, so the new finishes and new, new interior look of that, the main campus is going to be more in like and kind with what we built for the building addition that we opened in, over the winter break. The classrooms are coming along as well, so the process we're working on are, are the floor-to-ceiling marker boards, which are applied to the walls that were recently constructed, and then we'll move forward to student grade over the next several weeks. And we'll turn over the second floor for use by the campus at the end of July, so it'll be ready for the, when the students come back in August. But that allows us to work on the ground floor, so we've been working since school got out through the demolition pro, process, so that process is underway on the ground floor, and we'll do the same type of building transformation on the first floor, but we'll be working on that through December of this year. And our lifecycle project, which is where we're replacing building systems that have reached the end of their useful life, looking at the finished product of the re-roofed Rice Elementary School here. And then we put the new metal roof on Geesinger Elementary, had recently wrapped up the details on that one, so we've got some cleaning to do on the plaster and everything on the ends of that building, give it a nice, new, fresh look, and we'll be done with that, that scope. Then we moved on, since school got out, we're starting to replace the air conditioning equipment, so this is chillers and pumps at Armstrong Elementary, and then we've done chillers and are working on chillers and pumps and a boiler for Tuft, the Coulson Tuft current. Our project's on schedule and everything's proceeding just as we'd planned over, over the break. And then the, what is moving ahead also are the security infrastructure improvements for the entries at our high schools. All that work is yet to be seen, so it's all above ceiling and in the walls, but we're progressing well on that also, and that is our company.
Outstanding.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Any questions? All right, item five, business and finance. Consider approval of 2019, 2020 teaching hiring schedule. Dr. Noel.
All right, Mr. Rice, if you'll come present this item, please.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board and Dr. Noel. It is my pleasure to present the 2019, 2020 recommended salary increase. We'll begin this presentation looking at our rationale for our pay raise recommendation, and the first off, we want to provide a competitive compensation plan, and this is one of our 2019, 2020 budget objectives. And also, this plan is recommended by the Tasme Compensation Group. Second, we believe that early approval of the teacher hiring schedule, employee raises and stipends will improve employee recruitment and retention. Many of our surrounding districts have released information regarding their 1920 compensation plan, and some of them have been very aggressive with their plan. We feel it is important for our recruitment and retention of our employees to go ahead and approve this plan. Third, this, this proposed raise works within our 2019, 2020 budget, and it places us in good financial position for the 2020, 2021 budget. We've been very conservative, I think, with this recommended proposal, and we're not as aggressive as other school districts, but you know, we still have some unknowns out there with a potential bond referendum and, and with the 2021 budget out there. But one of the things some of the other districts are doing, and Katie in particular, they're looking at doing a retention pay, retention compensation, one-time pay, something like that for their employees. They're actually doing it twice this year. The way I understand it, they'll, they're, they're doing one of these compensation pays in, in August, and then once again, they'll consider one in December. So that is, that is an option that's going to be there for the district if we so find ourselves, you know, in, in that area. And then lastly, this proposal meets the requirements that's set out in House Bill Three. And please, if y'all have any questions, please chime in and, and ask away.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
On the retention pay.
Yes, sir.
If, we wanted to give one in August or December or January or whenever. How much, I mean, how much, does it just have to be an agenda item and voted on?
Well, what we will do, it'll last, actually be part of the budget, and we're getting clarification on, on the, on the, on the fine legal aspect of it, but it has to be part of the budget that y'all adopt for 2019, 2020. And then we will see if we come into December or, or January or whenever, the board can at, at that time, or, or Dr. Noel can, can activate that compensation stipend.
So it has to be part of the budget?
Yes, sir.
But we don't have to give it?
You don't have to.
So you have to put it in the, that's the question I'm trying to figure out.
Yes, we have to show that we have the ability.
And then we vote whether to actually grant it or not.
Thank you. Is that true, Kerya?
I think it depends on how you word it, so you could delegate that to the superintendent to determine based on the financial condition of the district, you know, it would depend on how we put it in the budget item, but it has to be in the budget so that it is compensation prior to people starting their contract year, count and forth.
Thank you. Okay, and then fourthly, this proposal meets the requirements that's set out in that House Bill Three. Just wanted to walk y'all through once again, House Bill Three requires districts to utilize 30% of their increase in their foundation school program funding to provide salary increases for full-time employees other than administrators. Of this amount, 75% must be used for full-time teachers, counselors, librarians, and nurses. So looking at our minimum requirement calculation, and, and we have got a lot of clarification over the last week from TEA, so we're very confident in our calculations now. Our, our FSP increase, $22.9 million, we must spend 30% of that on these raises, and that 30% is $6.8 million. 75% of that must be allocated to our teachers, counselors, librarians, and nurses. That 75% is $5,156,000. The remaining 25% may be used for the remaining full-time employees excluding administrators, so that's at a minimum what we're required to do by House Bill Three. But before we get into that, I would just wanted to touch base with you with updated pro forma on our budget based on House Bill Three with the latest clarifications that we have and understandings. As you can see, our estimated total revenue is now $540.4 million, including the raise that we're recommending. Our estimated expenditure increase is $38.4 million, giving us a total estimated expenditure budget of $533.86 million. That will leave us with potential available funds of $6.54 million, and we feel that 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 leaves us in good position going into the 2021 budget. You know, this budget the state does is over a biennium, so we need to make sure that we don't spend it all in the first year and don't have any for the next year to give appropriate raises to our employees. Any questions on, on that? So this is our recommended salary increase for our teachers, librarians, now nurses and counselors, and we included pay grades AE levels one through three. That will be a 3.5% increase at a cost of $8.1 million. In House Bill Three, we must have differentiated pay for teachers with six-plus years of experience. We're recommending $200 for this, that is a cost of $600,000. For our pay grades AS, IS, auxiliary, and police, this is primarily our non-exempt employees, a 3.5% increase at a cost of $2.4 million. For pay grades AB and AE levels four through 10, a 3% increase at a cost of $2 million. For a total increase to our salaries of $13.1 million. And if you will note, I do have the asterisk down at the bottom, just to say that the pay plan includes possible retention compensation. So that is just there, that gives us that flexibility now at this point, that if you ever consider that, we can move forward with that.
Okay. No, please.
So for that first group, pay grades AE one through three.
Yes, sir.
If those positions on a campus happen to be funded, say by Title I or some other funding source, is the campus going to have to increase their amount of Title I spending to match the raise, or is the district covering?
Yes, that will come out of Title I.
Okay.
Yes, they're grant funded.
Okay. Well, you said it had to be in the budget. You said here that it's footnoted.
Well, we're not adopting the budget tonight. We just have to footnote it tonight just so that it is in the compensation plan.
But literally, before we adopt the budget, we have to put a number in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Or, does it have to be a number?
I know we're not...
We're still getting clarification on that, but, but yeah.
In order to, to give you the option of that in the future, it had to be included in the pay plan presentation, so that's why that asterisk is there tonight, and then it has to be a line item in the budget in the future for that to be an option. We won't have to, we are getting clarification, we have to have an exact percentage because we want, that'd be a flexibility potentially for the future, so. I think Mr. Inman had a point.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rice, I, I, at the top, it says 3.5 for the teachers, and right below it, teachers with six. So the teachers, let's say with seven, they'd get 3.5 plus a 200, I think kicker, is that what I'm saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I...
Yeah, and, and I'll, and I'll show you the, the next slide is our teacher pay scale.
One second.
Yes, sir.
I had a question. I thought last workshop we looked at, we were looking at three and a half, well, three and a half and two and a half. I, I don't, that was the number I had in my head, because it was 1.6, and now it's 2 million for the pay grades AB and AE four through 10. Am I missing something?
There was a discussion on them, we shared that as a, as a potential, and certainly, this, this is a, your discretion, whatever you would have us to do.
It just looks different than the last one I saw, that's why I'm asking.
I think we did present this one as well. One of the concerns associated with the 1% gap between, was that we would be, we would create some compression within our pay scales, so like, if, if AE three was to get three and a half and AE four got two, received a two and a half percent raise, they may actually pass AE four, which would then create some compression within our entire pay scale. We can make any adjustments that you see fit. This is what was shared.
I, I remember that discussion as well.
Okay.
I just didn't know who was bumping who. I, I don't know that I ever got clarification. So you're saying the threes and the fours are the ones? I mean, if it's as simple as that, couldn't you just make some stifened adjustments to correct that rather than moving the whole class? That's all I'm thinking about.
If you, if you all choose to do two and a half on that bottom group, then certainly we would go in and make adjustments. We'd probably have to make adjustments more than in just four, because four and five would have some compression, but we could make those adjustments, it would just be some smaller adjustments to be made along the way, but we could do that, yes, sir.
Let me, let me explain a concern of mine, okay? Right now, you know, if you flip back to the budget, I, I can't remember, memorize the number, the 6.54 million, okay? I understand that, you know, we give raises every year. State of Texas is trying to correct those that, I mean, literally, they're trying to correct those that, that have never gotten a raise and are still at minimums and so on and so forth, and I don't begrudge teachers anything. They, they deserve more than we can afford to pay them, period. End of discussion. But the 6.54 million, I take it as a, you know, you're saying it's, it's a biennium decision, you know, and, and we've got another tax rate coming and, or tax reduction, compression, whatever we call it, okay? And what I'm not clear on is exactly, I mean, when we go down seven cents, what does that do to us financially? Because just the teacher raises is just one, all the allotments and, is that what you call them, allotments? Okay? How is that all going to, are we confident? I mean, you're the master of the school finance program prior to them changing it. I'm not sure they're existing master now, you know what I'm saying? I mean, who knows when the other shoe's going to fall? Oh, well, we didn't tell you about that, but that's going to hit you for another 2 million here or whatever it is, okay? You know it's coming, I know it's coming, it's just a matter of where it shows up, you know, because they, they forgot, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't consider it, let me put it for lack of better ways to put it. So is the 6.54 million, I mean, is it a shot in the dark that it's enough to cover the, the unknown? Is it, I mean, because when we give salary increases, they're forever. You know, I'm, I'm not using the, the, what do you call it? I know I want to call it something else and I'm not supposed to, so what is it?
Compensation stipend?
No, the retention, retention payment.
Yeah.
Because we can't call it the, the other thing. Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, here we got 6.54 million that, that is, you know, available funds for the following year, whatever that is for, okay? We've got unknowns, okay? And while I want to give three and a half, four percent raises, just like, you know, some of these school districts, but this is not the whole picture. You haven't shown me what, when we drop the tax rate or compress the tax rate, okay? What exactly is that going to do to us? And then you add up all the allotments and show me what the, what the program, you know, what the, what this revenue is, and, and where are we? You, you understand? If I ask the question prematurely...
Are you asking for next year with additional compression that we might face?
Not just next year. What I'm saying is, you're asking us to make an ass... Not just next year. What I'm saying is, you're asking us to make a decision on teacher raises tonight, but I don't know what the overall plus or minus is to what the whole program did to us. You understand? Are we up or are we down? You're showing me six point five four million, and I'm sure you've got all the revenue sources that you think are coming in that five oh, five oh two or five forty, excuse me. But I mean, is it higher or lower? Are we up or are we down?
We're up as compared to where we would have been under current law. Yes, sir. And we will be up next year as compared to current law.
And how much?
And this year we're up, well, you know, if you look at our calculation, it showed twenty-two million, but we're actually up around thirty-eight million dollars compared to where we would be under current law. Now, the calculation that we have to do under F S P for that calculation is different, but we're up about thirty million dollars where we were, if you, when you, if you remember my pro forma that I showed y'all.
I did.
You know, where we were negative six million dollars a few months ago. So, so we are up and we are going to be ahead in 2021 as compared to where we would be under the law prior to House Bill Three.
So with this six point five four million, and not all the decisions are made, retention or otherwise.
Yes.
But what other decisions do we need to make with this? What other caveat? Because if I vote on three and a half percent for teachers and I'm still staring at six point five four million when we were a negative six million before the change, then I'm thinking maybe, you know, we ought to, we ought to be looking at something maybe different. But if there are other shoes to fall, you know, other requirements for that money, I don't know about it.
I think within what we're presenting here tonight, it, we are, we are covered. Everything is in that we could possibly need in the budget. I do not, I do not, you know, force.
We're all in as far as revenue, as far as pluses and minuses of House Bill Three. You're confident that these numbers are final numbers?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and do we know in retention, if we gave everybody an amount of money? I don't, here, just make it.
One percent.
One percent, a hundred dollars, whatever. I mean, we can, we can extrapolate, but do we know what that's going to cost?
One percent of what?
Midpoint.
Other, yes.
One percent of the midpoint of their job category?
I mean.
They may or may not.
It'd be in the five hundred dollar range.
Exactly. That's the way Katie's structuring their one lump sum payments.
Okay.
We have to give a minimum. So what's the delta between the minimum and what we're actually, we're actually proposing?
Okay, let me, I'll have to unhide it.
I agree.
Yes.
Yeah, we have, we have that available for you.
He's going to be able to pull it up.
I share some of Mr. Hudson's concern.
You see, I mean, I don't want us to be behind what districts are doing. And yet, you know, I'm concerned that everything's so new that, that all the, all the unknowns aren't out there financially yet, okay? And we've had unfunded mandates before, okay? So we're going to compress the tax rate by seven cents, but, and here's your twenty million. But it just doesn't quite add up the same way by the time all the allotments are taken away and given.
Right.
They change.
Yeah, and we do feel like that what we're representing and I, you know.
Well, my concern is that we don't have a bond proposal for the board in November, or the bond proposed does not pass in November. And we have to prioritize, what is that for us? What flexibility, what levers do we have as soon as we take this approach?
Sorry about that. This is the minimum salary increase as required by House Bill Three that, that we have. It would include teachers, librarians, nurses, and counselors receiving a one point nine percent raise at a cost of four point six million dollars. Since we have to do the differentiated pay for the teachers with six-plus years of experience, we still had the two hundred dollars there per teacher. That would be six, six hundred thousand dollars. Those totals, five point two million. If you go back to the slide that we had when we did our calculation, you can see the minimum, the minimum for teachers is right at five point two million. So then all others, excluding administrators, would receive a two point four percent raise, and that's about one point seven million dollars total, would be six point nine million dollars. That would be the minimum as required by House Bill Three.
Okay, so that's six point nine. And what you recommended is thirteen?
Thirteen.
Can we see that?
Thirteen point one, yes, sir.
What I hear you saying based on your analysis is that this is still a conservative number.
I feel it's conservative.
And based on all the research analysis that you've done, you feel like this is a safe number?
And, and working with Tasby Compensation Group, you know, this, this is based off of their recommendation also for the rates. Yes, sir.
Tasby's interested in keeping the salary structure straight.
Sure.
I'm interested in keeping districts solvent, okay? And solvent is a, is a, is a big, right, term, but I mean, I don't want a deficit budget because we didn't take something into account.
Yes, sir.
And on the other hand, I don't want to not give an appropriate raise. I mean, it's two-sided. I don't want to give a raise that's not appropriate to the marketplace. I mean, I'm hearing crazy numbers out there and I, I just, I frankly don't understand how they can afford to do it when I know how financially well off we are, or well managed we are, not well off, but.
Well, as we've done in the past over the bienniums, when we've had this same situation, this, this board has never spent all the money they got. One of the few boards that make that decision to be conservative and save money for that second, second year of the biennium. We've done that traditionally. It is very smart on your part to do that because we don't end up with the school districts when that second part of the biennium, they're adopting deficit budgets. This budget, we will not have a deficit budget next year unless there's a catastrophe or something that, that is just out of our control.
Or we give another raise that we don't have the money for. I mean, it's like we could give a raise this time we don't have the money for. I mean, I mean, you see.
I feel very confident that, that we will have the funding to handle.
I didn't mean yours.
Mr. K. Oh, just, and I know things have changed, but just historically over the last three, four years, what have been our increases?
In 2018, 2019, we gave a two and a half percent raise for professional staff and a three percent raise for non-exempt. In 2017, 2018, we gave a two percent across-the-board raise for everybody. That was eleven hundred and twenty-five dollar raise for teachers in 1718 and a fourteen hundred and fifty dollar raise in 1819.
So to kind of, I know things have changed, but to kind of reiterate what you're saying, we've, we've played it conservative and kind of played it steady. And that's what you are recommending as well as we continue to play it. We're giving a nice increase, but we're still playing it steady.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So this is our recommended 2019, 2020 teacher hiring schedule. It has a teacher starting salary of fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Has a three and a half percent general pay increase. Every teacher will receive a two thousand dollar increase in their salary. As you can see, teachers with six-plus years' experience will receive an additional two hundred, so their total raise will be twenty-two hundred dollars. And on the midpoint, I think that works out to about three point eight five percent raise for those teachers.
Mr. Rice, what is like learning coaches, as we mentioned before on last board meeting, do they fall in that second tranche?
It depends if they are campus-based or if they're district-based. So a campus-based instructional coach, if they're, if they're paid on the teacher pay scale, then that's where they would go. A district-level coach, they're in that A E pay scale, those one through three boxes, that would be in that three point five percent. All right. But only, only the teachers would have this additional two hundred dollars.
Only those administrators, they don't get the two hundred if they're district-wide.
Understand.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rice, do you have a, like, something like this that shows other area schools that are comparable to us? I know that sounds like an awful lot of work. I mean, do we know what comparable schools are paying their people and what their system is?
Yes, sir. I mean, that is one of the things. And, and, you know, we appreciate Mr. Sanders being on the committee that meets with Tasby. And we go through all of our comparable districts and we look at all the, all the pay structures that they have and we, we do have it. I don't have it available for display tonight, but we do have all that information. I'd be willing to. And this, and this with, you know, from Tasby, this keeps us, you know, competitive with those districts.
And the outstate, and the years of experience, that includes, of course, if they come from another district?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, we want to make sure that was in there as well. Anyone in Texas, very good.
And we expect to see a lot of variation, obviously, as everybody's adopting their, their budgets, these, or their pay plans these next few months. As Mr. Hudson's mentioned, we're seeing some districts with large percentages. I think when we get to September, October, we're going to be able to get an idea of where did we land as compared to everyone? And that's where that potential retention idea could come from, or at the very least, a conversation about setting the 2020, 2021 pay plans earlier than we typically have, potentially in March or so of next year just to, so that we can respond at that point to the moving ahead. But we do feel like we've left money in the budget to allow us to respond in the future if need be.
This might be a small universe of population of people, but President Williams, you just said if they taught in Texas. So is a teacher coming from another state, moving to our district, would not get this, is they tenure teacher in the sharps?
My understanding is you have to buy those years.
If they're from another state?
Yes.
Okay, I know it's a small population. They'd have a teacher come in in fifteen years and say you don't get it. Okay, thank you.
And one other question. Would it be a potential option, talking about versus the retention? You know, where it's left open for discussion and so on and so forth, or vote or whatever. Would it be possible to up the additional adjustment for six-plus-year teachers? Because I've always had a problem with, I mean, I'm sitting here looking, one that's been here, I didn't know she was that old, but anyway, I'm just ticking on you. But I just, I mean, she's, I just, I've always had a problem with, you know, in teaching twenty-five years in this district and it's just two hundred dollars is what that's worth.
Every, every hundred dollars would cost us about three hundred, three hundred thousand. So if you wanted to do, you know, five hundred instead of two hundred, it'd be an additional.
Do was make that two hundred one percent, which we already talked about, it's about five hundred odd dollars, right? That would be my, that would be, I'm not even sure I'm recommending that.
Yeah.
One percent, one percent's about five hundred dollars, right? Little over.
Yeah. Something like that, five eighty.
And all I'm saying is yours, yours six plus or whatever, that, I've always been for, I mean, those people have shown longevity in the teacher business. They didn't necessarily longevity here, but longevity in the teacher business. And, and they have put in the years, and I'm just saying that I would a whole lot rather give that to those, to that, in that column than I would a retention bonus of, you know, save your Christmas money out of, out of your increase. That's all I can tell you. Do a little better job of budgeting and let's, let's go ahead and do it straight up. So, so I feel comfortable in suggesting or recommending that we adjust the two hundred dollar additional adjustment for six plus to whatever one percent is, five hundred dollars, round it off to five fifty, whatever it is.
Okay.
One percent.
If I could just throw this in for discussion, I really like what you're saying there, Mr. Husbands. But what if we did like from years six through, and I'm just, I'm just spitballing now, six through nine, two hundred, ten through twelve, four hundred, thirteen through whatever, eight hundred. But if you look at like year fifteen versus a brand-new teacher, that just doesn't look right to me. It'd be five thousand more.
And it never has.
Yeah.
So I wonder if we could maybe stair-step those up also as we go up the scale instead of across the board. Maybe stair-step that teacher's been here ten, twelve years.
But technically.
Thousand-dollar increase maybe.
But, but the real problem is if you have a great teacher and an average teacher teaching side by side and they're twenty-five years, they're, they're making the same thing. You know, that's what's really confusing about it.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm looking here at this fifteen-year-old brand-new.
Does this, does this disrupt the parity between, because this is just for teachers, librarians, and librarians and nurses, all other staff on the campus? Does that, does that?
No, sir. I mean, we, we, we've looked at the five hundred dollar option, anticipating that perhaps somebody might make that suggestion. Darren and I are confident that that's a number that the budget can hold. It will not affect our pay plans in a negative way. Mr. Emin, to your, to your point, just to kind of clarify, these, teachers don't automatically take the next step each year, which is the other confusing part of this. This is simply just a hiring scale. So next year, they won't automatically make the next number. They'll make whatever they make this year unless you choose to give them a raise next year. So it's, this is just a one-year picture. It's not a, a long-term, so it's a little confusing.
It took us about five years to get this squared, and it still has places where we have to.
There's a few.
Change them, you know, up a little bit or something.
Yes, sir.
Because that's what Tasby is, came in and restructured this about twelve years ago, right? But anyway, yeah, I stand by that recommendation because frankly, I think all teachers work hard. I hope they're all working hard, but they are. The ones I know are, and I would, I would recommend that we go with a one percent, and whatever rounded.
Can we round it to five hundred?
Round it to five hundred in that category and give it all, give it, give it all to them rather than, you know, worry about whether we have to vote for something in December or not. Let's give it to them right now.
Okay.
So, so is the discussion keeping with what y'all are recommending and then adding three hundred dollars to each of this to a five hundred?
That's the way I understand it.
That's what, that's what I'm going by.
It'd be about a million dollars, I think, is what you said.
Be roughly a million. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it'd be roughly that second line would be a million dollars additional, be one point six million.
And I know I was just asking questions about, I told you, it's both sides. I mean, you, you're confident that we're not in, not going to have the other two drop?
Extreme.
Then in that case, you know, I'm, I'm for doing more.
So, Mr. Husbands, you're, you're saying do that in place of?
The two hundred.
The retention?
Well, yes, sir. I would much rather give it to the six-plus-year teachers.
So not entertain the retention.
Yes, sir.
Well, I would recommend that we hold, we keep the retention because.
Give you your option.
We don't want, just in case we come to August and I'm just, and every district out there gave ten percent raises and we get our, find ourselves way behind, we might need that flexibility, you know.
Put it in the budget.
It's just flexibility. We're not locked into it. It's just flexibility.
Subject to board approval.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I think as a board, that's our responsibility.
Yes, sir.
Exactly.
It's a budget item.
But it gives y'all that flexibility.
But what I'm saying is, I, yeah, I think, I think it's, it's better for them to, you know, for hiring. I mean, I know a lot of the hiring is done, but, but again, they deserve to know. And, and they certainly work hard for us and so I'm, I'm for, I'm for taking one of those. And, and even if we took one of those retentions out of there for, you know, left the one in for one in, and when you do it, doesn't matter, right? But if we, you know, if you talk about August and, and December is one school district did. But if we took one of them away and put it in that, made that five hundred and left one of them in just so you'd have your option.
Sure.
I'm all, with access for board approval.
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's definitely do it.
Well, I don't know if we need to make a motion or.
Yeah, one last question, and I should know this, but what, what category is those that are the deal with the special needs? Is?
It just.
They're in one of those two first categories.
Yeah, they'll be in one of the first two. I don't, the sharps, do you know? They're in the teacher category.
Do they make a stipend to them?
It depends on the decision.
Now, that is, that is one thing I would like to just point out. You brought up stipends. We are recommending increasing the bilingual stipend by five hundred dollars, going from four thousand to forty-five hundred.
But it's in your number.
It is in our number. Yeah, everything is in, in the numbers. And then also we're increasing or creating a new stipend and remind me of the.
For the hard-to-fill special education, we are going from a thousand to two thousand for next year.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, yeah, that's for hiring competitiveness, right?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
And paraprofessionals are captured in that third line?
Yes, sir.
You say third line or second line? I mean, okay, third line.
Yeah. The A S I S auxiliary employees.
I got you.
Okay, so in terms of a formal amendment to this?
Is that, are you, are you, are you finished with the?
I am, I am recommending your approval.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
All right, gentlemen, we've seen the presentation.
We are, we are complete.
Well, I guess that was discussion. Then one of the motions.
I move that we approve the recommended salary increase as stated, three point five, three point five, and three point oh. And in addition, instead of the teachers with six years of experience being two hundred dollars, increase that to five hundred dollars.
Okay, gentlemen, we have a motion on the second.
Second.
On the second, any further discussion?
I just want to make sure that we're clear that it's a, we're leaving a possible one-time retention pay with board approval.
Agreed. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All right, all, the motion's been. All right, all, the motion's been approved, we have a second, all in favor? All right, motion passes unanimously. Mr. Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work, Darren.
Good discussion. Appreciate the, uh, input of everyone. All right, item 5B, received financial.
All right.
No.
Break it. All right, I'm here this evening to present the financial statements of the district for the month of May. These statements will include our general fund, debt service, child nutrition and self-funded insurance. Uh, the first statement we'll look at this evening is our balance sheet. Our balance sheet includes our assets and liabilities of the district. Each month, we like to take a look at our cash and investments, concentrating once again on the general fund. You'll see that we have cash on hand of $500. Uh, we have deposits in the bank of 514,000. We have investments with the state pools of 87 million, investments with Woodford National Bank of 121.7 million. Our, our longer term investments with TCG Investment Advisors, 51.3 million for total cash investments in the general fund of 260.55 million. Taking a look at property tax collections, um, property tax collections are in line with where we expect them to be for the year, so we feel good about that. Now taking a look at our income statement, our income statement includes our revenues and expenditures for the district. Our revenues are broken down into three categories, local and intermediate sources, state program revenues and federal program revenues. Taking a look at the detail of our local and intermediate sources, you can see that property taxes is the largest generator of revenues in our general fund and debt service, its food sales and child nutrition, and its premium contributions and self-funded insurance. We can also look at our year-to-date expenditures by major category for each of the funds. This is our 2015 bond referendum status, and if you'll look at those percent completes, we're getting very close, uh, to wrapping, uh, wrapping this bond referendum up. As you can see, we've, uh, had funds expended and encumbered of 501.4 million dollars. We have an estimate to complete, still on the books of 19.7 million, giving us a projected